People of mine stand and we'll get the meeting started. We'll say a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We'll start with our spotlight school, Harris Elementary.
Good evening. Thank you for having Harris this evening. We're excited to showcase some of the work that is happening across the district, but also happening in our building and what that looks like and how we have interpreted some of the training that we've experienced recently that you have supported as a school board and implemented that into practice to increase academic rigor in writing for our students. And so you're going to see how my teachers have worked to put that together and we're excited to share that with you today. I'd like to introduce to you some wonderful people. These fine three ladies back here are my third or second grade team at Harris. They're my second grade team at Harris. Three ladies on my second grade team, Sarah Hollers, Lindsay Emmerly, and Jamie Thompson. They do a phenomenal job. They've been together for quite a few years and having worked together, they're a pretty seamless machine. They bring a lot of joy to Harris. They're what we call the cackle crew at Harris. They're always spreading joy, laughing, and bringing just a great deal of fun to our building. And these students are fortunate to spend their day with these three lovely ladies. And so today, I'm going to stop talking and let them share with you what it is that they are doing. So feel welcome to use these shoes now.
Hello. We wanted to share with you tonight what we have been doing with a training that we went to over the summer on the Writing Revolution. This was a training that was previously, last year was done in our Tier Two, four through six. And over the summer, we were able to attend a virtual two-day professional development on the Writing Revolution. And we were actually thrilled with what we learned during the training. And we were really excited to get back to our classrooms and implement that with our writing. It kind of got us excited about teaching writing again because that can be a difficult thing to teach. And the Writing Revolution training really got us excited to teach that again. So we are implementing that in our classrooms this year. And one big thing that we have found with Writing Revolution is all about integration. Is that writing is not taught in isolation, that it's not necessarily its own separate time of day or separate subject, but that with the Writing Revolution, writing can be integrated throughout our day and across all subject areas. So we're going to kind of be showing you tonight how we connected writing with our reading and reading comprehension. But honestly, this is something that we have even used during our math times. So this is something that we have been integrating across all subjects in our entire day. And as I just mentioned, it really supports our comprehension instruction. And I will show you here on the next slide how it utilizes geodes, which we already had in our classroom. That goes with foundations and some interactive read-alouds that we've been doing as well. So here are some examples of the texts that we have been using so far this year during the first quarter. Seed Stash and Cranberry Crop are two of our geodes texts. So those relate to our foundations. And in those books, the students are practicing the phonics skills that we have been working on. And then Mrs. Gue, we worked with her to help us find some interactive read-aloud books that connected with our geodes texts. So with Seed Stash, we also read The Leaf Thief and Flatter and the Falling Leaves. And then with Cranberry Crop, we read Time for Cranberries and The Pumpkin Book. And that also gave us a good mix of fiction and nonfiction. And we were able to make a lot of connections that way. So now I am going to pass it on to Mrs. Hollers, and she's going to talk a little bit more about how we use the Writing Revolution with our books.
All right. So we started out with our morning work being the way that we were going to introduce our kernel sentences. And what we did is we would give them a kernel sentence, which was a really basic short sentence that they got to expand. And we expanded using words like how, when, where, things like that. And the kids all got to use the information that they read in the different books that Mrs. Thompson was just telling you about. And so we connected everything from what we're reading in our reading comprehension to our morning work. And it helped to make that morning work more meaningful, not just come in and do something and put it in your mailbox, but it led to other things throughout the day. And then we decided we wanted to see the kids do a little bit more of a writing piece. So we took kernel sentences from the morning work and made them all connect to do a structured writing piece. And here's some of the morning work. You can see the kids got to look at the kernel sentence and the expansions are down below. And then we also gave them a spot to draw a picture. But that led to our scaffold of writing piece. And that's what they're going to get to share with you today. We had just some sentence starters and kernel sentences. And you can see the different question words all throughout that text to help them think about how to give more detail to their sentence. And everybody was getting their information from the same writing pieces, but everybody was able to come up with their own. So some of the writing pieces sound similar, and then some of them in different places, they were able to make it more unique and more personalized.
So I'm going to introduce our second grade friends to you guys so that they have a chance to read the writing pieces that they worked really hard on with you. So we have Sophia, Suzanne, Jude, Murphy, Harper, Nolan. As we begin to wind down, I just want to say again, just a sweet thank you to these teachers for bringing this tonight. Writing Revolution in elementary is happening. It's happening across the district in K three. And I felt like this was a great opportunity for you to see how my teachers have taken that and integrated it with reading comprehension, building great background knowledge so that students have information to write about. I am always the proudest principal at Harris Elementary. I am grateful for your service and the way that you help take care of the students in our community by continuing to support the great work that we have going on in the community and at our schools. I want to thank again these teachers. Thank you to the students for being so very brave and for showing what you've been working on. Well done. Thank you to the families that continue to support us and take care of just everything that kind of happens at Harris. We're very fortunate. I would say Harris families are just amazing and some of the best. So we're really grateful for you and thanks for supporting your students and the things that we do in learning. And so we're a proud part of the GC community at Harris. And thank you for having us, Mrs. Thompson. You do not, I would remind, there is the lovely smells, our pumpkin bread and some special drink out in the hallway. Fall is here. Enjoy it on your way out, families. You do not need to stay for each in the hallway, but you're welcome to stay. Always welcome.
We love to, Beth. I love you so much. Do this.
All right, we'll move forward. Was there any public comments this evening?
No one had requested to speak, and I don't believe anyone signed up this evening.
Nope.
Move right along to routine matters. I get a motion to approve the regular meeting of September the ninth and the executive session September the ninth and the special session September twenty-third.
To approve the three minutes as presented.
Can I get a second?
One second.
All faves say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying, on to claims, Mr. Day.
Yes, in your packet are the regular claims, payroll claims, and a construction claim. In the construction claim, you'll start to see that we are releasing some of the contingency money, particularly for early parts of the project. You know, we're walling around the structural steel and the concrete walls and stuff like that. So that that claim's a little bit higher than it has been historically. But you know, whereas we're wrapping things up, we're starting to release some of that contingency. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about claims. Otherwise, I ask the board to approve as presented.
If we have questions or comments, if we don't, can I get a motion to approve the claim document as presented?
I mean, do we approve the claims as presented?
A second?
Second.
All faves say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying, on to old and unfinished business, financial matters. Mr. Day?
Yes, in your packet would be the Education Operations Fund reports. I did update the August numbers because they were nearly final last month. So those are final and September are final as well. Education fund revenues, we have adjusted for the fall of 2024 E D M that we filed with the state. I had actually taken it down a little bit in my estimates over what they were projecting for us. So it's really, really a positive to our education fund in this situation. Otherwise, our expenditures are based in the education fund on our beginning of the year staffing, which is a little bit smaller than last year. Operation fund revenues are unchanged at this time. I feel comfortable with our cash balances are going. Continue to work on that operations fund, try to be more efficient, take care of some things. Unfortunately, things are expensive right now with inflation. So we're tackling those as we come along. We've had some unfortunate needs that were unexpected in the original budget, a pool heater. We had extensive drain work needed to be done at Harris right before, not Harris, sorry, Westin, right before fall break. So we put money aside to take care of emergencies and we have dipped into that money to take care of a couple of emergencies. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, there is no action needed on this item.
Any questions or comments? We'll go continue to budget 2025 adoption.
So in your packet are four resolutions and then obviously the budget packet that we've advertised previously. You know, we had our hearing last month where we invited public comments. So today, we are just adopting the meeting. I would like to adopt resolutions individually if possible. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer questions about the budget and what we're going to be submitting to the state if there are any.
Yeah, if there's any public comment this evening, if there's none, I get a motion to adopt the resolutions as presented.
Are we doing these one at a time, Mr. Day?
I'd like to do them one at a time.
Mr. Ford?
I'll make a motion that we approve the bus replacement plan as presented.
Second.
All faves say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the capital projects plan as presented.
Second.
All faves say aye.
Aye.
I'll keep going. I'll make a motion that we approve the Form Four Resolution for Appropriation and Tax Rates as presented.
Second.
All faves say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying.
And finally, I'll make a motion. We approve the appropriation reduction resolution as presented.
I get a second. All faves say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying. Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you.
On to structural programming.
We have a variety of things for you as you see in the packet. Actually, we'll start off with Mr. Carey.
First item in the instructional report is the Indiana College Core Update. This is something we talked about last month. I wanted to let you know that officially, the high school has signed a memorandum of understanding with IU Kokomo. One of the recent pieces of legislation this past year is that all schools have a partner school for the Indiana College Core. And so after a lot of research, the high school will be partnering with IU Kokomo. We still have A C P courses that will be getting IU credit as well. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. You do not need any official action. Wanted you to be aware of that's where we're going. Second item is also for me, that is the high school course proposals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I know it seems hard to believe that we're already talking about course proposals, but we'll be starting those meetings soon. And so this is informational only for these four departments, five departments, excuse me. And we'll bring those back to you in November. For math, we have A C P precalculus and trigonometry, which is an online course. Social studies, we have humanities. Science, we have astronomy and planetary science. World language is A C P German. And technology has building and facilities maintenance fundamentals and advanced building and facilities maintenance. So you have all the information you need there. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. We'll bring that back to you in November for approval. We believe those will be helping us not only with the new high school diploma redesign, but also with A C P and college credits we plan to offer.
Yeah, we'll move on to the reading and adoption and selection. Mr. Murray?
Good evening. We are currently in the process of reviewing reading materials so throughout this first semester. So the way our process began, we had a list that was put out by the Indiana Department of Education that narrowed our choices down to five. From that list, we kind of narrowed that down to the two that were content building, knowledge building curriculum. So K five, that's, we're currently in that process. We spent a day reviewing our first one of the two. We have a meeting this week to kind of review that, go over the follow-up steps from that first material. And then we have another day in November to review the second material. And then we'll have some presentations from both of our publishers in December. So that's our current process. Hope to have a finalized selection by the end of this first semester. And you want to talk about six through eight?
Yeah. So the high school is a little bit different animal with the diploma redesign. Some of those courses sound like they're going to change. So high schools kind of put the brakes on their adoption right now. They're still reviewing materials, but they don't want to get too far until we kind of see what the diploma is going to look like. Sixth grade teachers have done a great job meeting between Maxwell and G I S. And they're going to continue to meet during that next e-learning day in November. Junior high teachers do a great job as well. They have narrowed it down to their top three choices. And we're going to keep working on those days as well. Hope to have somebody isolated for those groups by the springs. We can get those ordered and working through a very similar process to the K five teachers. So we're pretty happy with where we are right now.
The reading adoptions by far are our biggest adoption, not only in terms of the amount of materials, the cost. We put a lot of time into it, a lot of input from multiple teachers, coaches, administrators. And of course, the state helped us a little bit by narrowing that scope in terms of which ones they would approve anyway. But these would have been vendors that would have been on our list. A lot of work goes into that. We'll make sure we do that in a timely fashion so we can do some professional development before next.
Kind of answered my question. I was curious what everyone's thoughts were on the ones the state selected. There would have been vendors anyways, but it sounds like you answered it.
I think we would have been happy with those two anyway.
Yeah, there are two, the two that we're reviewing, K five, were pretty much the big names anyways. The state did, you know, help us out and narrow that down a little bit. So that was helpful.
Six through twelve has no restrictions. So we basically took some of the more popular vendors and talked to some of our partners around the county and central Indiana, narrowed it down a little bit.
Continue, E. Morning?
Yeah. So our second e-learning day of the school year is coming up. So K, that's our K three math teachers. I'm sorry, K five math teachers are all following up with math again. We had a math session, our first e-learning day, working through reveal math, our new math curriculum. We're going to have a continuation of that session the November day with our other subject areas are working on high impact teaching strategies. So that's ordering K six and K five math.
Junior high, you can see in your packet there, is going to be working on their I-Learn scores and their grading data. And the high school is going to have some breakout sessions involving our multi-language students, special education services, and school safety. So it'd be a busy day for our teachers.
Just kind of reminder, we've typically done three or four e-learning days over the last probably five, six, seven years. It is the time when we can get all of our staff together. We do a lot of professional development that is offered over the summer, but we can't guarantee that everybody will be there. So these are three days where we can get everybody on that same page. I can assure you that our principals use that time wisely under the leadership of Jason and Deb. Next on that list, the other full end of that spectrum, when you think about early years initiative grant, Ms. Leclerc.
Yes, we did find out from the state that we were recipient of the early years initiative grant, which will help us provide a birth to three staff childcare. So we have a lot of details to work out, but we're very excited to have that and to figure out some of, problem solve some of those issues because we do think it is very needed and will help to grow our preschool and then our K twelve program. So we're excited about that.
Great opportunity for us. We just found out that we received that as we went into break. Obviously, since senior will be helping us with that, we've got a planning session scheduled for later this week and a lot of work to do over the next six to eight months. The last thing that you have in the instructional report is actually Amplify in Hancock County Career Center. And Amplify being the large project that Hancock County Commissioners, Council, and R D C have committed to. We actually have Tim Jensen from the Veritas Group here this evening to provide a little bit of an overview. So, Tim?
So thank you, Dr. Olin, and members of the board. I brought my laptop up here not to present anything, but I think you guys have a presentation in your packet, the digital kind of a update that was sent out to you hopefully last week, which provided answers to questions we originally received from the county council as they were interested in getting an update on the project as we're getting closer to that funding mechanism and the bond to be pulled here likely by the end of the year and then sold probably at the beginning of next year. But really what this is facilitating is the need to begin to solidify even further the partnership agreements that we've been working on for the last two years probably as an Amplify board and a team with Ivy Tech, Hancock Health, and then the four school districts in the county. And so I know there was a meeting today between the four superintendents and that H C three group that's called the Hancock County Career Center on what that looks like. But I'm here today to answer any questions you might have on that document that we sent out to you. Obviously, we're not looking for approval tonight, but this is certainly a letter of intent, more or less, a partnership intent agreement, because we will be coming back to you likely in a month to ask for you to approve that so that we can then take that approved document to the county council for their, for the bonding purposes.
Tim, they do actually have a little bit of the pro forma in front of them. They've got the architectural design. And then they also have the agreement that you've referenced. Did you happen to have any of these this evening?
I did not bring them. I can certainly make them available for you, for your board. Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Just the more comprehensive piece there that you'll have, I did tell the board we would bring that back on the November eleventh so they'd see it for a second time. But this has been a very long project. And Tim with the Veritas Group was very helpful in terms of securing the property that the county ended up buying using the 1.4 million dollars from Ready. The county has hired the Veritas Group as the owners represented to continue overseeing this entire project. And just to be very clear here, the county has graciously agreed to build this facility, setting aside forty-eight million dollars. That's forty and a half million dollars in hard construction costs, seven and a half million dollars on the soft cost side of things. The Veritas Group has put together that pro forma to talk about what those operational costs would be. And then that agreement outlines really what the K twelve schools, the four county school corporations, would be responsible for, which is a fraction of that. Obviously, Ivy Tech is paying their proportionate share. The hospital will be paying theirs as well. So, you know, I just encourage you to ask Tim
Yeah, please, whatever questions you have.
any questions that this.
I guess I'm looking at the building and are these classrooms, the classes that are being offered are pretty much set?
So I would have Dr. Olin answer that question because I know he's been working with Stan Wilkinson of Mount Vernon, who's now, I think, calling him the principal or the director of.
Yes, the director. Can you bring up that architectural design there? The short answer is it's close. This particular drawing, as the corporations have been working with Stan Wilkinson, have identified really eleven programs they'd like to start there. I would say most of those are solidified. There are a few that I think we're still trying to work out among the four county school corporations in terms of which ones would be there. But most of those are pretty solid.
And then is this going to be a set time where people come in? Or because I kind of heard that maybe there'd be like people coming in, not off the streets, but just coming in and doing their own work, like business work or anything like that? Is that something that was.
Probably not a part of this particular facility. And this actually highlights it pretty well behind you and those in the audience as well. You can see that the purple area would be the K twelve portion. And it does specify what these are for. This would be everything from C N A labs to welding, auto shop on the far left there. The areas that would be in the green color would be Ivy Tech's space that's dedicated there. And then the orange on the far right would be the radiology portion from Hancock Health. And then on the second floor.
Right. Second floor is all empty right now.
Yeah, but you can see that the county is. Yeah, but you can see that the county is, is building a structure that's roughly a hundred and six thousand square feet. Much of that, uh, what they've referred to as white box, it's just cheaper to build it now versus building that in the future when that, that need emerges. But that could be space for HC three, or it may end up being space that goes toward Ivy Tech. I suppose it's possible that could be, um, incubation space, but that's not really what the initial purpose of that was, where people would come in from the community.
Yeah, I just thought, and I, there's a place up in Fishers, and I can't remember what it's called, but they kind of have a facility like this, but then
Spoken Wheel, I think it's called?
Yes, that's it, yeah.
Heaven's Valley.
Yeah, right. Well, you know, a lot of tech people will come in and, you know, get together, conference and stuff like that.
Yeah, so the way this project's being funded by the county, it really has to be occupied, or the tenants have to be not prof. So has to be along, so it could be any kind of, that's why Hancock Health, technically a nonprofit, Ivy Tech, the K twelve schools, right, are all nonprofits. So, um, and they're doing non-taxable lease rental bonds, which means that they can't have a taxable entity taking space within the building itself. Um, just the way the, the financing is working. So, um, I would not expect, I, I wouldn't see, I could see an incubator type space, but it'd have to be some kind of nonprofit that's trying to incubate local businesses. Uh, can you go back to the first floor, please? Just from a school board's perspective, uh, you can kind of see it, and where the yellow, the main yellow on the corner kind of turns into purple there. There's a set of doors, and so we've been taking careful care with your superintendent and all the superintendents, frankly. That, yeah, so that whole area is going to be a separate entrance for the nine twelve students. That'll be locked off from maybe even the adult learners in the, in the Ivy Tech side. And then the, the classrooms that are in the brown are spaces that, from a cost perspective, made the most sense to share, but they are HC threes during the day. And then after six o'clock at night, Ivy Tech can come in and use the welding lab, or they can use one of the other labs specifically. Because otherwise, we were looking at building two separate welding labs, which from a cost perspective, didn't really make sense when you're not even talking about using them at the same time. So we, as we began to cut square footage, we were at a hundred and thirty thousand square feet at one point, and we're trying to really bring this thing down into a manageable number where the county can, can do it. So Dr. Owen is correct, the county has committed forty-eight million dollars to building this facility, which is, I think, a, a really nice gesture back from the, all the TIF money that they've been, um, collecting in that area. Um, but it does require some operating expenses, which we've given you pro forma in, in your, in your packet. I know that superintendent's met on that today with some of our team, kind of talked through how that gets, uh, paid for. Um, and we're trying to keep the cost, the, the county council from the very beginning, you've had a few champions on that group, uh, that have really pushed and said, we want our K twelve, our local K twelve schools to pay the least amount of any partner. And so that the pro forma also shows that Ivy Tech's paying more, Hancock Health is paying more than any one of the four school districts. And so you guys are all paying a much reduced, it's not a rent, it's more just covering expenses. Uh, we are part of a very similar project we led out in Hendricks County, so you might have heard of Made a Plainfield, very similar project with Ivy Tech, Plainfield Schools and a few others, Vincennes Universities out there as well. And we were able to get that operating data, and then we had the same property manager give us the projected operating data for this. We're very comfortable with these operating expenses at this point. They've gone through the plan, so this is what it's going to take utility-wise. And we're continuing to work with Nine Star and Duke and other, um, utility providers to see if we can even cut down potentially some of those expenses. Because utility expenses, you can imagine, is the largest expense we're going to have in a hundred and two thousand square foot building. So Nine Star's come to the table with some really, um, great offerings so far. We expect to see continued partnership with, with that team.
It continues to be an amazing collaboration, bringing a lot of people together for a facility of, of this size. But Hancock County has not had a higher education institution, aside from a few classes we've offered at the, the library or Greenfield Central High School various times in the past. This would bring it to the county. Some of the other interest, I know Rob had mentioned today, Rob Matt has been working this, uh, project as well. Butler University, Vincennes, there are other educational entities that have expressed interest in having a presence there as well. Probably won't happen to start with, but as we move into, to future years, it'll keep that theme.
So Dr. Owen mentioned, we will be back next month, uh, to, to talk about this partnership agreement even more. Um, there is one thing that we're going to change. If you, he said you had a copy of it, so if you have that on the first page of that agreement, it does mention, um, there's an old line that'll be caught today, actually, that talks about how you'll be responsible for your own FFE a, as part of that project. And he talks about chairs and desks and computers and something else. Um, we have since gotten some initial budgets back, which have been really, really positive, to the point where we're going to be able to provide through the project itself, all the chairs and desks and furniture, so that it looks cohesive, whether it's an Ivy Tech student using it, or a Greenfield Central student, or a Mount Vernon student, doesn't matter. So all the way through the, you're not going to have different furniture in different classrooms based upon who's teaching it, right? We want that all to be the same, so that's going to look cohesive throughout. It'll just be the things that you're going to use, disposables, right? Whether it's a CNA nursing class that uses bandages, or whatever they're doing will be, will be provided by the individual schools themselves. But all the furniture, including the technology and all that stuff, will be provided by the, the project overall. So we're excited about that. We can, we can remove that line.
I think there's about two million dollars set aside for that, that FFE, so. So we'll bring back the updated version of that, uh, next month, which actually is three weeks from today, November eleventh. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Move on to construction project.
I don't really have a lot to add, other than we, we keep talking about this date of substantial completion being October seventh and October fourteenth. And we had our, our last construction meeting Wednesday, the sixteenth. We were told that we would be given occupancy November first, so it's moved back a little bit. The good news is it's not going to impact us adversely on the programs that we had planned to have in that area. Our first large performance will be December seventh. I think we've identified, and we're certainly looking to get the, the community some opportunities to, to see the space as we get toward, uh, mid to late November. Things that still need to be done, um, if you'll scroll to that next picture, you can see just a little thing. For instance, you don't see the, the countertops and the half walls were not in. This picture was taken early in last week. All fourteen hundred seats are installed. Now, you don't see them on the left there. You do see some of the, the purple wall on the top there, uh, where the balcony is. We still have a few things that need to go in place there. A little vinyl, a few, uh, sound buffering things. There's some things that go into the, both of the, the tech areas. But over the next two weeks, those things, for the most part, should be, uh, in place. That's from the balcony and looking down. I think that carpet is even in now on the, the bottom left-hand side, so those, and definitely the stage flooring where it's, uh, it is black. It is in place. You're just seeing underneath that lift, they've put some, I think it's just carpet.
Extra, it's extra plywood, extra plywood on there.
So I mean, that stage flooring is done. You do see on the north side that the canopy area, it's framed out. They just don't have the hard surfaces on that yet, so within the next couple of weeks.
Well, they, they have the, they've got the wood on it this weekend.
Well, they worked quickly on that then, so we'll stick with that theme there. So just a few odds and ends that do need to take care of. We'll be planting a few things, probably a few trees here as, uh, we're in that season now. The offer still stands. If members of the board would like to have a tour of that, Mr. Day and or I can, uh, arrange that for you. But for the larger public, they'll have that opportunity here, uh, probably in the next four to six weeks.
Exciting news. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the collective bargaining agreement.
Been trying to give you highlights of the, the bargaining process, really, as that officially opened for us in, uh, September fifteenth. And then the state gives us two months to, to iron that out. We've really had a, a very collaborative process, and we have come up with this, the tentative agreement. We have advertised that on the website, so that's open for the world to see. I've given you some of the highlights in terms of what we were achieving here. Really trying to take away any of, or minimize those increases to insurance on the, the health insurance side, moving forward salaries. Basically, everybody's been guaranteed at least a, a thousand dollar raise if they were evaluated as effective or highly effective last year. The average raise is just a little bit over sixteen hundred dollars, because we were able to do some, some catch-up. The model we received from IRB, it's probably a fifty-page document that they put out every year in terms of suggestions they have for collective bargaining. We were able to, uh, latch on to one of the, the recently approved models that they, they've, um, that they've approved. And it actually worked very well for us to, to catch some people up. In the end, we, uh, did get that approval from the Classroom Teachers Association, thus leading us to what you're seeing in front of you. Uh, we do need to open that up to the, the public in case anybody would like to speak to that.
Yeah, that, open it up to public comments? All right, we continue.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll bring that back to you at the November meeting.
All right. All right, on to out-of-state field trips.
Just have the one, and this is no surprise to you, the Greenfield Central Junior High School requesting permission to take students to Washington DC, May tenth. It's a fine old machine. They know what, uh, your expectations are. As a former US history teacher, it is a highlight of the year for, for many of our eighth grade students. Jim Stapp does a nice job with that, and I would certainly endorse that.
If, uh, no questions or comments, can I recommend approval of the overnight and out-of-state trip?
I did, uh, we approved the overnight out-of-state trip for the eighth graders.
I get a second?
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
I oppose saying. To, uh, board policy recommendations for sure reading.
You haven't seen any of these from me for a while, but this is that time of year as we look to our partners after legislation's in place to make some recommendations for us. Most of what you're seeing here are policies that need to be reviewed on an annual basis. There aren't really any surprises. I've given you a little, a short synopsis of why the, the need for the policy is in place, but you have C one twenty-five on admission to the corporation, C two seventy-five test security provisions for statewide assessment, C five twenty-five medical needs at school, D two fifty, the teacher appreciation grant that you see each year. And then that last one on that next page, F one twenty-five purchasing procedures and capital assets. Certainly willing to take any questions you have about those, uh, draft policies in front of you. Otherwise, I would bring those back to you at the November board meeting.
No, no questions or comments. We'll move right along to the Greenfield Central Police Department.
Greenfield Central Police Department, as, uh, obviously our principals in the audience know, and I think our community knows as well, we, we put a lot of stock into making sure that our schools are as safe as possible. We've hired numerous school resource officers over the last few years with our goal of having a presence really on all of our, our campuses. We've encountered a little bit of difficulty with our partnerships with GPD and, and the county, and having their endorsement and putting their officers in our school. And those conversations with both Chief Hartman and Sheriff Burkhart, they've both encouraged us to look at the potential of starting our own police department. It is a pretty common practice, as I think Mr. Carey could tell you, looking around central Indiana, many school corporations have done that, so we'll take it from there.
We, we've done a lot of research over the last few months, just trying to make sure that we are staying on top of everything we can for school safety. Uh, just a few of the departments we've talked to, the Danville Schools and Clark Pleasant Schools, gone through this process as, as we are, and have been very good partners with us, provided a lot of documentation. So essentially, it is a few steps to begin to, to work towards having your own police department. The first is a resolution that you have, uh, at the end of this attachment, uh, that just has been customized from other school districts to meet our needs here at Greenfield Central. Uh, that would be a first reading this month and a second reading in November. After that, we are legally allowed to post for a chief of police position and hire that person. Once we have a resolution that has been adopted by the board and a chief of police, we can then petition the state to form our own police department. And the chief can then begin working through the different certifications, hiring a, a staff and, and work in that direction. Uh, it's certainly not something we plan on starting right away, but because of the length of the process and just our situation now, we wanted to go ahead and get, get that in front of the board, make sure you had a chance to see it, ask any questions. Uh, as Dr. Owen said, this is something that both GPD and the Sheriff's Department have encouraged us to look into. Uh, we are the only county surrounding Indianapolis that does not have a school corporation with their own police department. And in talking with other county schools, it's certainly something that they're wondering, uh, if it's in their future as well, so.
I think is a good opportunity for us.
I mean, it sounds like our partners, we're still going to be partners, just
Absolutely. I think they both want to be very clear that they want to support us in ways that they can. It's just difficult on the staffing side for them to continue to support us the way that they have over the last decade or longer. So we plan to bring that back to you in, in November.
Right, all right, thanks. On to, uh, personal matters, contract recommendations, resignations, leaves and retirements.
Four leave of absence requests, Kelsey Davenport, Andrea Groninger, Sarah Nagle, Tony Wilmetts, one certified retirement, Michelle McCorkle. On that second page, uh, leave of absence from an extracurricular position, Emlyn Logan. ECA recommendations, Ben Felver, Jordan Freeman, Josh Holden, and Matt Pfeiffer. And lastly, ECA resignations for Matt Clayton and Glenn Davis. Our recommendations that the board approved the personnel report as presented, provides us with opportunity to hire as needed for this school year. And of course, we'll bring those names to you at the next regular scheduled board meeting.
Make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented, as well as give permission to hire as needed for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second?
Second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed saying. All right, if we have nothing else, um, future business dates. E-learning day, November the fifth, twenty twenty-four, regular school meeting Monday, November eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Thanksgiving break, November twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth. Uh, topics for our future agenda, collective bargain agreement, ratification, fall athlete coach review. If we have nothing else, can I get a motion approved?
A minute.
Second?
Second.
All favors aye?
I oppose saying.
Thanks, everyone. Happy night.